Welcome to another edition of the Chairman's Report, the Chairman of your Select Board in Plainville. He is Brian Kelly, joined by Town Administrator Brian Noble. Gentlemen, I'll begin with you, Brian Kelly. How's it feel to be the Chair again?
It's good to be back. It's good to be back. Still plenty to do. You know, we're on a great track, made a lot of progress, and heading into what I think should be another fairly smooth town meeting.
In addition to running the actual meeting, what other responsibilities does the Chair have that the other two members of the Select Board don't?
Well, it's really the responsibility of setting the agenda, you know, what we're going to do each meeting, you know, organizing and things like that. A lot of times, too, it's priorities. If, as a Chair, you've got specific priorities that you want, you can have a little bit more, a little bit more leverage from that perspective, but in reality, it's a team effort. Everybody on the Board contributes in the same way.
A lot more work?
I wouldn't say a lot more work.
Okay, well, that's good then, because you guys make so much money, you know? We started, I think, last year, the tradition of before the annual town meeting, which is always the first Monday in June, of going through the warrant. So for those of you who are planning to attend that town meeting, you have some of the background on what these articles mean. Brian Noble, I'll begin with you. How many articles in the warrant? And I always ask this question on behalf of members of our staff, more of a North Attleboro issue in the past than probably a Plainville issue. One night, you think, you'll get through the warrant?
Well, I'm certainly looking forward to one night. Doesn't necessarily mean my wish will be granted, but we have 26 articles, and four of which will be dispatched, or five of which will be dispatched very quickly with the consent agenda. These are routine things that are still required, go back to colonial times, so we're going to just try to dispatch them rather quickly, so as not to spend an awful lot of time on things that don't really matter, so that we can spend our time on things that do.
Now, Plainville, like most towns, has a town meeting, not representative town meeting, town meeting. I know you need a quorum before you can begin the meeting. What is that number? What is that percentage? Any idea?
It's 75 registered voters is the quorum.
So it's not based on percentages at all?
No, no, and it is an open town meeting, which means any resident of the town can walk in, sign in, and vote.
Hmm, interesting. Before we begin, finances. I'm sure you guys follow what's going on in area communities. We are in the North TV studio on Tuesday, I wanted to say Monday, Tuesday, May 28th, the day after Memorial Day. Norton is holding its town meeting tonight. One of the things they will discuss is an override. What amount? We don't know. I'm sure, Brian, you've been following what's going on in Franklin. They have a $6.8 million override in a special election on June 11th. 6.3 million of that will go to the school system. Plainville not looking for an override at this point?
No, we are not. Sorry, I'll take this one. We've been down that path. The town was extremely clear, and I think that's part of the reason why I'm still sitting in this chair, which was how are we going to fix this without raising taxes? And to this point, it's been through new growth, and it's been through managing the budget as tightly as we can, and that's what we're doing. We've been able to, with Brian's help and with our great Finance Director, been able to get our bond rating increased, and we're in for rerating again, hoping for another increase. We'll see how that goes, but we're in a very strong position right now. We've been putting money away. You'll see again in this year's budget, putting more money away. We're in a great position, but we do see there are issues on the horizon that will face us. Our vote's already been passed for the new Tri-County School, which will be a hurdle to get over, and there's also the issue of PFAS and the water that needs to be addressed, and that is going to be a large bill as well. So those are things that we have to, we'll have to solve for in the future, but the good news is we've never been in a better spot to face a challenge like that.
All right, let's go through the articles. As Brian Noble said, many of these are just housekeeping, and I would assume Article 1, see if the town will accept the reports of his officers, boards, departments, committees, and commissions as printed in the 2023 Annual Report. That's simply a matter of housekeeping.
Correct, yeah, and it's a part of our, what we call the Consent Agenda, which Mr. Noble mentioned at the beginning, which will include Articles 1, 5, 6, and 22. So those will all, we believe, be passed in one shot, similar to what we had done last year.
So 1, 5, 6, and 22.
You'll notice as you go through the agenda that there's a CA next to the article, so you'll know that that's in the Consent Agenda.
Oh, very good, very good. So I just wrote on this beautiful document for no reason whatsoever. Okay, Article 2, deals with salaries. See if the town will vote under the provisions of General Laws of Massachusetts or any amendments thereto. Raise and appropriate any sum or sums therefore. Who wants that one?
So yeah, Article 2, that's the operating budget, so that's, you know...
Oh, so that's the operating. It's not just salaries?
Correct.
Okay, my mistake.
That's everything, so, you know, Proposition 2.5, right? We've got the 2.5 year-over-year. Our total increase year-over-year because of new growth brought us up to just under 3.5% year-over-year. Our total operating budget will be $42.3 million this year, and that's up from $40.3 million last year. And a part of that increase is a couple of grants that have gone away, that we now have to pay for ourselves, and a couple of grants that are starting to phase out, which is putting more of the onus on the taxpayer.
I'm sure there's someone watching, and I'm sure you guys talk to people all the time. Well, it's being raised by more than 3%, you can only raise 2.5%. You want to explain that to people?
Well, the balance is new growth, and that's kind of what I was chatting about earlier, where if you've got expenses that are coming in greater than what you're able to bring in through typical taxation, it's got to come from somewhere, and if it's not going to be an override, which in Plainville, it's not going to come through an override, that's where we come in, and it's about fostering new growth and bringing in those new dollars to the town.
So that's in addition to the 2.5% increase. Very good, so now you know what the limits of Proposition 2.5 mean. Anything within this budget that you want to identify before we move into Article 3?
Nothing in particular that I would want to call out. I would just say that, you know, I had kind of made a little proclamation before last year's town budget, that I think all departments felt like we were back from the cuts we had had several years back. We had, you know, been able to bring enough revenue back to the community to build these departments back up to where they were previously, and where we found we could have a new normal in town, and that's, we're trying to maintain that pace. We don't want to, we don't want to get too big too quick, and we want to provide everybody with everything they expect and not overspend because of the challenges I mentioned earlier.
New growth is so important to a city or town. Is there enough land in Plainville for new growth to continue moving into the future?
Yeah, we've still got a couple of great spots for commercial development, and a couple of spots that I think some might say are underdeveloped, that in time, I think, will change over. One of those is a project that's getting ready to go. It's already kind of been started in the center of town. Jeff Kinney and his team, and Julie, his wife, are starting on quite an endeavor, which will be called Plainville Square. So you'll see the fencing has just gone up a couple of weeks ago, I think, middle of June for official demolition, and then we're going to see some great growth right in the center of town. It's going to be beautiful.
I drove past that Sunday, dropping my wife off at the outlets, and could not believe how much fencing there is. I didn't realize they were going to come down the street headed towards Town Hall, to the point that they are.
Yeah, yeah, right around the pond there.
Yeah, it's going to be nice.
It really is.
You're lucky to have him as a resident.
We certainly are. We certainly are.
So there's two big increases in the budget that are outside of the town's control, one of which is the MAC, or the Emergency Communications Center. Our assessment is going up over $100,000 because the state's grant for the 911 establishment has now ended, so now we have to pick that up, so that's about $100,000. And our King Philip, or KP, assessment is going up 10.81%, which is a $786,000 increase. So that's, those are our two biggest changes in the budget, particularly the KP number, because if you look at our revenue numbers, the amount of money that we collected from the Proposition 2.5 allowance is only $761,000, so $786,000 is going to KP.
And as you said, you have Tri-County on the horizon and trying to fund that as well. How is the number determined for Plainville, Rantham, Norfolk, of what they contribute to the KP district?
Just based on head count.
Nope, it's a very confusing formula.
See, I would have thought head count.
Well, I think that's some...
That's part of the formula. You're correct in that regard, but the other part is they try to equalize the community's value, property values, and then look at the amount of money being brought in, and the number, and then the number of students. So it's an extraordinarily complex spreadsheet for that analysis, so it takes a while to get the hang of that, and so far, the school has always been accurate in the way they had calculate that number, and it has to be certified by the Department of Revenue as well. So it's a combination of factors that go into the equalized value, and this also is the same formula that's used for Tri-County.
Okay, so that new growth, which helps revenue-wise, probably hurts you when it comes to funding King Philip, but does that one of the factors that drives that number up?
It is one of the factors that drives the number up, but our property values are not equal to Norfolk or Norfolk-Rantham, so that helps us, but in the end, it all evens out. We increased our population of students at KP significantly. Consequently, we are paying more, both because our equalized values are catching up, and secondly, because we are sending more children.
So stop having children. No, I'm only kidding. Article 3, this, I take it, is CIP, Capital Improvement Projects?
Correct. Capital budget for the town for this fiscal year '25. You'll see that departmental requests were just under 1.8 million. Finance Committee recommended, and the Select Board agreed with about one, just over 1.4 million of those, of those improvements for the year, and you'll see that the source of that is coming from either free cash, overlay, surplus, or capital stabilization. So there's zero borrowing for a second year in a row. Maybe a third?
Maybe a third.
Definitely second. No borrowing.
Certainly helps you moving forward.
Correct. You know, big numbers on this, you'll notice, financial software upgrade, police cruisers, a new ambulance, and then everything else is maybe, you know, $50,000 or less.
So I'm going to use the term losers, but they're not necessarily losers, but the losers from what was requested and what's being recommended would be the Highway Department, probably, right?
At the moment, it looks like, yeah, truck van for facilities and a six-wheel dump truck for the Highway Department are the big ones that are getting pushed out till next year.
$250,000 for a dump truck, my goodness.
Yeah, and $478,000 for an ambulance.
And we're in there early for our quote. Other towns just finished up with 526, so I feel very lucky.
Wow, unbelievable. Timing is everything. Article 4, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, appropriate, excuse me, transfer from available funds or otherwise provide the sum recommended, or any other sum or some be expended under the direction of the DPW Superintendent. Okay, long story short, the additional needs of our roads in repair. Everybody complains about roads. Is it Chapter 70 money that states?
Chapter 90.
Chapter 90, 70 schools, right?
70 of schools. The way you remember is that 90 is a road.
Oh, yeah, which they charge you for.
Absolutely.
I was on it last week, heading to Springfield. So this is additional money to add to what the state gives you to pave the road so people won't complain about potholes.
Our Chapter 90's money is less than $100,000. We have $600 million plus of roadway in our town, and Brian can tell me exactly how many miles that is, but I think we looked it up, right?
It's 162 lane miles of road in Plainville.
So it obviously needs more than what the state is providing for maintenance, and it's now up to the town to preserve its investment in its roads.
Now, where does that Chapter 90 money come from? Is that the gasoline tax when I'm filling up my gas tank?
Gasoline tax, mass port fees, things of that nature that fund that.
Now, your colleague in North Attleboro, Mr. Borg, the Town Manager in North Attleboro, has argued that compared to what it costs to pave one mile of road, the Chapter 90 fees just aren't keeping up.
It's a contribution, but it's not a payment, if that makes sense. They're participating. We'd like more, we'd always like more, but we're happy with what we get, and one of our obligations is to make sure that all of our roads are qualified to get funded under Chapter 90.
Right.
So we collect all of the money that we're entitled to.
Correct.
That's one of the projects this Board has taken on, because we've had an awful lot of unaccepted roads that never got reported for Chapter 90 money, so now we're being good stewards and going after that funding.
Right. Mr. Johnson, fellow Select Board member, has gone through a big effort to determine roads that are not yet accepted and identify them, so you'll have seen a lot of new signs up around Plainville saying this is a private way, which has got people a little bit excited, like, oh, jeez, I didn't know it was a private way. What does that mean? Well, we're working on trying to get as many of these roads accepted as possible so they can go into the equation for Chapter 90 money, hopefully bringing more dollars to Plainville in the future to help to upgrade those roads.
Now, when a land donor brings in a developer, they make all this money on this property, and then they say, we want to wash our hands of the private road. Do they have to give the town of Plainville something to maintain those roads?
So typically, there's a bond in place, and what should happen, which wasn't happening historically in Plainville, is that before they move on, the road gets accepted, and then that's, then the bond gets released. A lot of these projects would finish up, you know, the company would go out of business, go bankrupt, whatever, leave town, and these things never got accepted. I know there was another, another way we used to do it, we had chatted about.
So there, another way of doing it is that the town meeting could vote to maintain roads that never took title to, and that's what they did in the past, which means that some of the quote-unquote "private" roads are being maintained by the town, but they're not eligible for Chapter 90 reimbursement, so consequently, now our job is to perfect the title so the town truly owns the road and has a right to maintain it and can submit to the state for Chapter 90 funds.
Now, maintaining also means plowing snow, correct?
Plowing, and the town can plow a road when there's a beneficial interest to the town, so certainly getting those residents who are paying taxes as if the road was accepted, I think, would have an expectation that the town would plow, and we do. As long as the road is safe to plow, we will plow it, but consequently, we're after doing it right and perfecting the title so the town has the legal right to maintain and to plow that road, and since we're doing it anyway, we might as well submit that for Chapter 90.
Article 5 is another housekeeping measure, allowing the Select Board to accept state and federal grants. Did I get that correct?
Yep, accept and spend.
Spend, yes. That's good. Article 6, another housekeeping measure. This one requested by DPW.
Yep, and that's the Chapter 90 money, being able to accept that and spend it as we just discussed.
Okay, Article 7 is not housekeeping, authorizing the Select Board to purchase alternative energy power or net metering credits to further reduce the cost of electricity in municipal buildings. What electricity are we talking about here?
Sure, that would be, we'd reduce our electric bills by buying energy credits. So for example, I'll just use this as a, an example, not as an actual, town of Situate has windmills and solar panels. It generates more power than it can use. It then offers those credits for sale, and we can buy those credits, and it usually saves the town no less than 10%. So we then take those credits, apply it against our bill, we save money.
Interesting. And when you say more than the town can use, meaning Situate, you're talking about town buildings, not all residents in town?
That's correct.
Okay. Article 8, authorizing the Enterprise Fund for the operation of the Water Department. So if you have water, does this include sewer?
That's a separate.
So if you receive town water, this authorizes that.
Right, so similar to some of the housekeeping items earlier, where it allows the town to collect this money and then utilize it for special purpose, very similar. This is for water specifically, and last year, the budget for salaries benefits operations was 2.3 million. This year, we're anticipating 2.6 million, and between water revenue and the tax levy, you know, obviously, we'll match that. So 2.3 last year, 2.6 this year.
And it's important to note that this is separate from the operating budget. This is only paid by people who are on town water. People who have wells do not pay into this.
Do not contribute to this.
Very good. Article 10, capital requirements of the Water Enterprise Account.
Yeah, so this year, we're, you know, there's some potential really big water projects on the horizon. We've got a new well, a possible water treatment facility, but those are not here yet, and this year, we're looking at spending about 350, exactly $350,000 is what we would estimate to be spent on booster station rehabilitation, some water meter replacement projects, and I guess there's two of those, 100,000 for one, 150 for another.
And the reason they're separate is one comes from retained earnings, the other from an article repurposed.
Right, those are money that was allocated to other articles that ended up not being spent, that's left over that we can then apply towards a similar purpose, which would be this.
Article 10, very similar. Here's your sewer. The water comes in, it's got to go out.
It's got to go somewhere, and here we go. So, yep, so very similarly allows us to collect, you know, which kind of runs as its own standalone unit within the town, collect money coming in in order to operate the sewer.
The percentage increase on water compared to sewer is much higher. Why is that?
One of the things that's affecting us on the sewer is the amount of inflow and infiltration from groundwater into the sewer lines, so essentially, we're sending clean water or rainwater to the sewer treatment plants here in North Attleboro. We have to pay for that, so consequently, our sewer bills are rising as we get more rain, and so we're, have another article to fight that, but at the moment, it's beginning to show up in our operating budget of the Sewer Enterprise Fund, that we're having to pay more to treat the water we're sending.
Doesn't happen during a drought, does it?
It does not. It does not, but I mean, this is, this is one of the issues in town that at some point, we're lucky right now, some of the new growth that's occurring is in places where there's existing water and sewer connections, but we have basically had a sewer moratorium for new connections to the sewer, because we're sending so much to be treated because of groundwater infiltrating the sewer pipes during rainstorms, and as you know, we've had historic amount of rain this past year. So you'll see the next article here, Article 11, is to move some money to help pay for the lining of these sewer pipes so that the groundwater stops infiltrating.
Is this similar to, and you read about it every now and then, or you see it on TV, when the city of Boston has heavy rains and flooding and stuff, raw sewage isn't treated, it's just dumped into the ocean because there's just too much coming in?
That's the old days.
The old days.
But pre-MWR. I'm a little sensitive on that issue since I served on the MWR. So consequently, and this was the whole thing that brought about the cleanup of Boston Harbor, and it's sort of the same thing that's happening here. The water and storm drains were cross-connected, so water came into the drains and went straight to the sewer plant, which was constructed in the early 1900s. It overwhelmed the plant, the only solution they had was just to open it up and let it flow through, and literally, raw sewer, which was going into the harbor. So a particular lawyer was jogging along Quincy Beach and wasn't impressed with sewage washing up on Quincy's beaches, sued, that forced the whole MWR Boston Harbor cleanup. Before that happens, that's not exactly what's happening to us, because North Attleboro can handle the volume that we're sending, but it's sort of the same thing, the groundwater, storm water discharges infiltrating into the sewer and flooding into the sewer treatment plant, and while the North Attleboro plant has been able to handle it, we've never, the North Attleboro plant has never violated its permit, it's not fair, and it's beyond what we said we would deliver to North Attleboro. So consequently, as good partners in that system, it's our obligation to clean up our act.
This guy could write a book about his past.
He is of wealth of knowledge.
Maybe he will someday.
Only about sewer issues.
Okay, Article 11, I think you mentioned, $445,000 for the INI rehabilitation and remediation projects.
Yep, coming in from our sewer INI stabilization account to go towards the project of relining those pipes, which should help to, you know, reduce how much we're having to send to North Attleboro to be treated, and hopefully, search of, you know, I don't know if it'll necessarily eventually reduce, because there will always be more costs, but limit the cost to a certain extent, but also allow for additional capacity in the future for additional connections.
And I have to ask, INI is?
Inflow and infiltration.
Okay. It's not an egomaniac.
So we're going to spend about $1 million here.
Okay.
The bids have been issued. We have awarded a bid. We'll be signing a contract before the end of the month to start the work, and when the work starts, it'll only take about a month, a month and a half for them to complete, depending upon the weather, and we should see an immediate decline in how much effluent we're sending to North Attleboro.
So it's going to cost about $1 million? You're asking for 445? Where's the rest coming from?
We have money from ARPA, which we're going to use to pay that down, and consequently, those two funds together make a big dent, because we're going to do about 20% of the system. That does mean we have another 80% to go. What we're doing right now is picking on the most effluent full, or INI full, system, which runs along South Street to the border.
Article 12, Sewer Enterprise Retained Earnings. Town incurred higher expenses than anticipated due to unanticipated increases in monthly volume, similar to what we've been talking about.
Just what we talked about, and fortunately, it only came to $25,000, which is a bill now we'll have to allocate from this year's budget to pay, which was incurred last year.
Article 13, I know this well, the money you collect, and the money Comcast collects in franchise fees comes to the town, then is paid out for North TV to operate the two channels in the town of Plainville.
Correct.
And this is kind of like just throwing a dart and see what number, because no one knows.
No one knows.
Cable revenue has gone down, I think about 11% over the last couple...
You'll notice that the...
Yeah, it looks like it's going down a little more than that even this year.
Yeah. Article 14, this article authorizes the payment of an overlooked invoice from March 2023 totaling $8,803. Is it me, or, jeez, we did not expect it? Can't we just pay it without having to go to town meeting?
In my opinion, that's only logical, but unfortunately, the law goes back to, you know, 100 years ago, and it requires a town meeting vote to pay the bill. If I were the creditor in this case, I'd be livid that you're holding me up for a town meeting vote. Thank goodness, you're the creditor.
And you haven't charged us any late fees, so we...
Oh, this is me! Oh, I remember this!
Sorry about that, we'll take care of this as soon as possible.
My goodness. I need to, you need to give this to me earlier than 50 seconds before...
But if you've forgotten about it, it's okay.
That is one of the quarterly payments that was missed. I think it was a transition in...
We were thinking of presenting you with a large cardboard check, but we don't have the meeting organization just yet for this.
Oh, that's funny. Let's see, Article 15, the article authorizes the Enterprise Fund for the operation of the Solid Waste Program. This trash and recycling?
Correct.
And that number's going up about $15,000?
Yep, year-over-year, and you notice, last year, you'll see the bins around Plainville now. We've gone from bags to bins, so things look a little bit tidier on Trash Day all around town, and it seems to be going pretty well, and it's a relatively modest increase, given how much a lot of things are going up year-over-year.
Have people stopped complaining about how small the barrels are?
I'm one of them, and I have. We actually talked about that, too.
You know, they fit a lot more than you think they would.
They do, they do, although I said, you know, around the holidays, when there's a lot of, you know, people at the house and things like that, it can get a little, it can feel a little small, but yeah, it's, so far, so good.
And what people don't realize is that had Plainville opted for bigger barrels, it would be costing more, week to week, which is probably very unfair to that elderly person living all by themselves.
Yep, yep, and that's why Deb Revell is as great as she is, because she saw through everyone's complaints to what would eventually work, and we're there, so. complaints to what would eventually work and we're there, so.
Is it Rentham that when I drive to the outlets, small barrel, North Attleboro, small barrel, Plainville, Rentham's barrel looks absolutely huge in comparison?
I haven't noticed.
Yes.
I have. Article 16, well, Rentham is a very affluent community.
Apparently.
Yeah, apparently. So they should be paying more for the KP school district.
My board is very frugal.
Size of the trash barrels, trash bins should be factored into the KP equation as well. That would help you guys. We'll bring that up. Article 16, dealing with Mass General Law, chapter 40, section 13E.
Yes, Special Education Reserve Fund. So, you know, that's one of the things that can really swing in a given year for a school budget. And so rather than having it built into their annual operating budget, we decided to set up a special reserve fund that they could draw upon if needed in a given calendar year rather than inflate a budget, perhaps unnecessarily, that would then be built in year-over-year.
Makes sense. And pretty much every school superintendent I speak to, speak with, says, same with town administrators, town managers, it's the one thing, they just have no idea moving forward. It's tough.
And this is just, you know, a quick note, one of the things, you know, we have a lot of things like this we've been doing since Mr. Noble came to town and started helping us in recommending some things which make a whole heck of a lot of sense, particularly if you've got the revenue coming in to start to do these things. Obviously, if you're on a shoestring, you can't be setting money aside, but when you can, you should, and helps things run a lot smoother and it's been great.
Telling you, I'll be the first to buy your book. Article 17, opioid class action lawsuit settlement, $32,633 Plainville receives.
That we've already received. In one account, another account, it's got $35,565,000 in it. We're looking to move all of this into a specific stabilization account. Do we have an official name for that?
Yes, we do.
Just the opioid class action lawsuit settlement stabilization account? Is that it?
You got it. It's Special Purpose Opioid Settlement Stabilization. Did you want us to go back so you could edit that out?
No, 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 that's fine. I have this new iPhone. I used to like when you just clicked up and down to shut it off. Now I can't tell if it's on or off. It was apparently on. Okay, very good. Article 18, transfers money from the overlay surplus account to the other post-employment benefits, OPEB.
OPEB. Yep, this is our, I guess we call it our token donation to the OPEB account, as much as you can put in each year. $50,000 is the number that we've come to this year. I think, has it been $100,000 in the past or is it a...
No, it's always been 50. And it's very important to be consistent. If you keep going up and down and it confuses or irritates the bonding agencies when they want to do a rating, they're looking for, do you acknowledge that you have an obligation and are you doing something? A lot of towns are doing nothing, so we're in the group that's doing something. Eventually, when our obligations to the county catch up and we'll be able to do more with getting rid of this debt.
Article 19, once again, Mass General Law, Community Preservation Act.
Yeah, so this Community Preservation Act was something we adopted, I think, three meetings ago?
Gosh, I think it's even more than that.
More than that now?
It was before me.
It's flown by. Okay, yeah, so maybe four meetings ago. It allows us to collect, it's 1%?
1%.
Additional on top of folks' property tax to be used for special purposes. So in this case, you'll see, let's see, we've got 10% for open space, 10% for historic preservation, 10% for affordable housing, and the remaining can be used on projects that the Community Preservation Act Committee so chooses and votes on, which, as you'll see in the next couple of articles, we've got a couple of projects that are approved and ready to start to spend some of this money we've been collecting for several years.
Which leads us right into article 20, $150,000 to the town-owned Field of Dreams, another $125,000 to the parking lot at Telford Park.
Right, yep. So these, this is, you know, money that was collected through the CPA program, allocated through the CPA committee, and now we're looking for town meeting to sign off so that money can be spent. As you mentioned, $150,000 will be spent at Field of Dreams for essentially like a snack shack and some restrooms there. And then 125 will be spent for Telford Park parking lot. Once the old town hall was demoed, we would kind of have some empty space there and we've got such big programs that happen there, there just isn't enough parking at this time. So we're going to make it a much more efficient use of space there and have a new parking lot for the park.
Next problem to have, huh?
It is.
And where did I see it? It might have been a sign in the downtown area about fireworks at the Field of Dreams coming up?
Yeah.
When's that, June?
In June, yeah. I know I have that date here. I want to say it's, I'll see if I can find it before the end. But yeah, it'll be a celebration of life for Melia Jessic. It'll also be the 5K to crush cancer.
That's what I, that's what I, that's what I...
So it's going to be...
Sign over near the post office, right, hanging?
Yep, probably the biggest celebration we've had in our town probably ever.
That's awesome. Article 21, donation of land. Once again, it would seem a no-brainer, hey, someone wants to give us land, but has to go to town meeting.
Yeah, very generous donation from the Cattell family. It's a very prominent family in town. This is a parcel of land right in front of Field of Dreams that was donated for future use, you know, undetermined at this point, but certainly appreciated.
Fantastic. Article 22 is once again a matter of housekeeping, and that has to do with setting the license fees, correct? No?
Some, somewhat. These are all of the revolving funds in the town. The money that would be collected, for example, passports at the library can be used to support that program up to this limit. So in other words, this is money being paid for services that once paid, we can spend to support that service. So in the case of passports, it's to hire the passport clerk, or in the case of dog licenses, it's to buy the dog license and to do the paperwork and support that program. So consequently, there are many things that the town does as individual services that require some funding. For example, firearms permits would require staff, so the money can, goes into the revolving fund and then is used to pay staff.
Interesting. I did not know libraries had anything to do with passports.
Our library does.
Yeah, that's unusual. What a great service. Article 23, personnel policies and compensation bylaw should be reviewed and adjusted annually as necessary. This bylaw sets forth the wage and compensation policy for non-union town employees.
Right, basically, each year, taking a look at it, making sure that we're in compliance with whatever minimum wage there may be, but on the other end, making sure that we're being competitive with other communities to be sure that we are able to retain our employees.
Everything from the public works director to a page at the library or a lifeguard in the park and recreation all fall under article 23. Article 24, National Grid requesting an easement across the town-owned property to lay power lines or equipment to service a customer who wishes to upgrade their service. I'd like to say make National Grid pay as much as possible, but they're just going to...
We really don't want to do that.
No, because they just pass it along to the resident, no?
Yeah, they would pay it, they would pass it on to the customer, which in this case is the town.
Oh, okay.
So this is to upgrade the power that's coming into, I guess you'd call it our current well site, where we plan to put additional wells in the future, possibly could have a water treatment facility there in the future. And so this is to grant access to run that power.
Yeah, as you can tell, I'm not a big fan of National Grid. As a matter of fact, the call I got was about propane being installed because we're putting in a generator behind our house because I'm tired of losing power every time it rains with National Grid. Article 25, the purpose of this article, transfer available funds into the capital expenditure stabilization account. I can always tell when we're putting things into stabilization, we're near the end of the warrant.
We are, yep. So once everything that we need to spend in, you know, in the year is spent, now we can see what we're going to do with the rest of it, and that's where we get to do something that historically, Plainville wasn't really able to do. The last few years, we've been able to do in a big way. And this year, we'll put $500,000 into capital stabilization, 234 of that coming from free cash and 265 of that coming from overlay surplus.
And article 26, general stabilization fund, Plainville's savings account, some people call it the rainy day fund, and then they complain it's pouring outside, why can't we use that money?
This year, we'll be putting $250,000 into that from overlay surplus into that stabilization account.
And what stabilization fund, what percentage of the overall budget is that now at? Because I know that's very important to the bond rating companies.
Very important to the bond. We're over 5% now, which is good. There's no cap on how much the town can reserve. They previously had been. So the best way to describe this is Harvard works on an endowment that goes back to the beginning of Harvard University, and they've been able to accrue and invest funds. If we had been able to do that since 1905, we'd have no tax bills. So the legislature now has taken off the cap and we can put money into stabilization and we earn interest on that account, which can be used to support the operating budget. This is a very intelligent move, both by the legislature and our board of selectmen who made that a priority.
Interesting. The legislature actually did something positive. I find that hard to believe. Which article, if any, do you anticipate, and I know you never know, might draw the most discussion?
I mean, typically, it's the operating budget that drives the most discussion. I mean, that's, that's the main event of the meeting, you know, and we have it right up front so that we have everyone there. You know, that's, you want to, you want to have everyone's attention, you want to get through that. You know, the last couple of years, it's been easier than it has been because we've had the resources to allocate and we haven't had, you know, we haven't had to say no to things that were absolutely necessary, right? So there's a lot less outcry than there was when we really had to make significant cuts earlier. So they've been much more pleasant meetings these past few years.
Yeah. Where, when?
Yeah, so June 3, 7 o'clock, Wood School. We will have Champions Daycare Services available until 9 o'clock. We ask that you please arrive between 6:30 and 6:45. There's usually a line to check in to get your voting card and register. So please come between 6:30, 6:45 to check in. We, as you mentioned, up front, 75 people for a quorum, so please bring your friends and to that point, you know, there's, I wouldn't say limited parking, but sometimes there's a big crowd, so if you can carpool or if you know someone that needs a ride, you know, reach out and come together.
And it will, of course, be live on the Plainville channel, North TV's Plainville channel, Comcast Channel 8, and streaming for everyone to watch on plainville.northtv.net. Gentlemen, a pleasure.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
And hopefully, that $8,800 is approved.
Check's in the mail.
I've heard that before. Thank you for watching this special edition of the Chairman's Report.